Okay, let's call the order of the regular city council meeting of June 27th with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson, here. Council members Ratty absent, Lawson, Smith.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Manager Carey.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, our invocation speaker today is Pastor Shay Hicks from the First Baptist Church of Sparks. You all please stand, please.
Thank you, would you join me in prayer? Our heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this wonderful day, but we thank you for the opportunity we have to gather together as a city council and as citizens to do the business of the city. Lord, I pray that you would just bless this time, Lord. We thank you for each one of the men and women who serve our city on a daily basis, and Lord, we pray that you give them wisdom today, Lord, as they deal with the different issues that will be brought forward, and, Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity as citizens to be able to come and to share our opinions and concerns, and pray, Lord, that you give us wisdom and patience, Lord, as we share our concerns, Lord, and we thank you for this wonderful day, we thank you for our great city, and, Lord, we pray that you would continue just to bless us, Lord, and bless our city, Lord, in the days and years ahead. We pray these things in your son's holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Hicks, we appreciate those kind words. If you'd remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, please. Mr. Smith, would you lead us?
Sure, would you join me, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have comments from the public. If you want to speak under comments from the public, please fill out one of these speaker cards, and you can go up, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm not here this afternoon to gloat, but I am here to say that the citizens of this area receive justice with the recent June 13 ruling by the United States Supreme Court regarding conflicts of interest. I wrote to Councilman Carrigan back on March 15th stating exactly what the Supreme Court decided in June. It was the citizens' rights that were violated as ruled by the Supreme Court because when you are an elected official, you should be cognizant of the wishes of your constituents, whether they are in your world or not. I remember this councilman saying to the people who opposed the project in question that they did not vote for him, so why should he listen to them? This is a huge mistake, and I hope that a lesson was learned, and in the future, you listen to the people and not vote the way you want to vote. If there had been no opposition, then I could understand you voting your individual vote. I was asked by Councilman Carrigan why I wasn't attending council meetings anymore, and I told him because I was tired of being ridiculed, harassed, intimidated, and threatened, and because the members of this city council did not listen to the people. Since I was one of several who filed ethics charges against this councilman, I feel we were vindicated. Personally, I have nothing against this councilman, as I indicated one day when I had a chance meeting with him, but he should have known that what he did was not ethical, but there again, he took the advice of an incompetent city attorney who told him there was no conflict. Shame on those in that position who give misleading information to our elected officials, and then have to defend them in a courtly, costly court battle, costing the city of Sparks thousands of dollars that could have been used to save jobs of city employees who lost their jobs in these hard economic times. I hope in the future, when you vote on a project, that you will do so with an open mind as to what is best for the area involved and its neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, next is Irene Ruhard. Come on down Irene.
At the Sparks Marina on the morning of June 11th, at the free fishing day sponsored by the city of Sparks, my friend Diane and I stood at the edge of the walkway surrounding the marina with clipboards and voter registration forms, asking pastors by if they needed to register to vote. In accordance with the law and motivated by strong personal convictions, we assisted any qualified voters wishing to register, regardless of party affiliation, strongly believing that we were performing a public service and a convenience for busy families. It was a good example of civic duty and engagement for the children to observe. We received many thank yous from both the people registering and from others pastors by already registered who appreciated our service. We displayed no apparel or labeling of any kind that would indicate our political affiliations. I wore a tee shirt with only the words "Register to Vote" and bullet points indicating why a person needed to register or re-register. These words are straight from the register our voters checklist. No party affiliation or expression of personal beliefs appeared on our persons. We had been at our location for approximately one and one half hours when we were approached by a gentleman who later identified himself as Mr. Ed Lawson, a member of the Sparks City Council. Somewhat antagonistically, Mr. Lawson questioned our right to be there and who were we representing. We responded that since we're on public property, we felt every right to be there performing a public service. Mr. Lawson then stated that this was not a political event. We responded that we were not engaged in anything political but performing a public service for busy families, and were not there to engage in any political discussion, but only to help citizens to register to vote, a privilege and a right that people in many parts of the world are willing to die for, and which we Americans enjoy so freely. Mr. Ed Lawson then informed us that we must go to the free speech area to continue our activities. I questioned this, since I believe that in the United States of America, all public areas are free speech areas. Inquiring of Mr. Lawson if this was Berkeley of the 60s, he did not respond to this. Now, we did not know that the Sparks Marina or the Sea of Sparks has such a designated area, so we inquired as to the location of the area. Perhaps you, Mr. Mayor, or the members of the Sparks City Council can tell us where the free speech area is, but we, being free citizens of the United States of America, the state of Nevada and residents of the city of Sparks, had no idea of the existence or the location of this free speech area in the city of Sparks or the Sparks Marina. Mr. Ed Lawson, council member, informed us that this free speech area is at the far end of the thumb of the marina, an area so totally remote from pedestrian traffic that virtually anyone wishing to register could not find it. Mr. Ed Lawson's actions and attitudes...
He struck down.
I have one paragraph.
Just finish it up, yes, please.
Mr. Ed Lawson's actions and attitudes, we believe, are un-American. He should have welcomed our public service as an opportunity for busy people to conveniently exercise their civic duty and provide a model for their children's future growth as responsible Americans. If nothing else, it is disappointing in the extreme that an elected official would actively make it difficult for his constituents to have a voice in their governance. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Comments, Mr. Lawson?
Yes, well, I disagree...
Irene? One second, please, we've got some questions, maybe.
While I disagree with her entire way that she's put this, there's obviously, there's two sides to every story, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you this, I'm gonna hold out the olive branch, and as the chairman of the Free Fishing Day for next year, I'd like to offer you guys a table to come and register voters, and at no charge, since it is a free event. But I'll tell you where my motivation came from in the question of you, is that there's 2,100 kids there that I am personally responsible for, in my Rotary Club and everyone else, and when people are not forthcoming with the truth, when asked questions, I have to question their motivations. The last thing in the world I ever want to happen is for any of those kids to get accosted or taken or anything bad to happen to them, and that's my entire motivation for the whole incident. So I'm sorry we had a misunderstanding, but in the future, I'll be happy to provide you with the table, and so that we know what's going on as a group.
I think everyone should have the right to vote, any qualified person, and that's a good opportunity, I thank you.
Never did question your ability to register folks once. I just questioned your timing and the ability, you know, I asked you several questions that you didn't answer quite forthcoming, so that's what kinda raised mine.
Well, I was very shocked at the whole thing.
Me too.
I was really shocked, so I appreciate that, and I look forward to next year.
Thank you.
Thanks Irene, appreciate it. Anyone else under comments from the public? Yes ma'am?
Thank you.
Come on down, please, and state your name for the record on, at the microphone, and then if you'll fill out one of these cards when you're finished, I'd appreciate
My name is Gail Dietrich. I'm a community organizer for the Democratic Party Organizing for America in Sparks. One of the concerns I have is that in other states, people are being prevented from registering and voting. Not only did this not come down as you said, but there were other ramifications. Now, thank you for allowing us to come next year, we appreciate that, but I'm concerned about people having the freedom to register to vote, and we are registering people, whatever party they are. We're not making any designation as to who can register to vote. I don't want to see what happens in other states happen in Nevada. I want everybody to feel free to register and vote. As you all know, we have an important election coming up in September. That's one of the reasons we're out registering people. So we just want that freedom, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And Gail, could you please fill out one of these cards? Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Mayor? Go ahead, Ron.
Just a quick question, I wanna make sure, is, are these two speakers related? Was it the same event that happened?
I was the organizer for...
So this is the Democrat Party that was there?
Organizing for America.
Okay, thank you.
Same event we're talking about.
We were representing for America.
Okay. Okay. Thanks ladies, appreciate it. Approval of the agenda, anybody wanna take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Carey?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to... A couple of items, which would be withdrawn from the city council till posted on a future meeting, and those are items 6.10 and 6.11. Both of these are resolutions that are simply not complete for your consideration today.
You want that as part of the motion, John?
If you would.
Okay. Still looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
Who to approve the agenda is outlined, excluding 6.10 and 6.11.
Do you have a second, Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve the agenda and postponing 6.10 and 6.11. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Please vote again. Please display. Passed unanimously. Okay, let's move on to 4.1, commendation and presentation of exemplary business award to Demir's Family Vision Group by the Sparks Advisory Committee for the Disabled. Mr. Lawson, is there someone here to accept this? Come on down, ma'am. Please give us your name for the record, and have a seat.
I'm Dr. Leslie Demir's, from Demir's Family Vision Group.
Okay, Mr. Lawson's gonna read the commendation list.
All right, the commendation, whereas an estimated one in five Americans have some type of disability that limits their access to public facilities and local business, and whereas the Sparks Advisory Committee for the Disabled has determined that Demir's Family Vision Group at 670 North McCarran Boulevard in Sparks has designed its facility to provide accessibility and accommodations to patients in wheelchairs, meeting the needs of disabled members of our community, and whereas the employees and doctors of Demir's Family Vision Group have proved to be knowledgeable, willing, and able to offer assistance with friendly, polite, and courteous attitude to help the people with disabilities, now I therefore, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, join in the city council and the Sparks City Advisory Committee for the Disabled, in commending Demir's Family Vision Group for providing extraordinary service and facilities to accommodate the members of the disabled community.
Thank you. We're proud and honored to offer our services to any citizen of Sparks or the surrounding communities.
How many years have you folks been in?
Fifty-four.
Yeah, I know, it was a long time. You haven't been there the whole time.
I've had a lot of work done.
Okay. Leslie, thanks for being here, we appreciate it, we appreciate the business that Demir's does for us, we appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
You have it.
No problem.
Okay. Okay, next, I'm gonna skip 4.2 briefly, and we're gonna bring down Mr. Joe Salinas, who's gonna give us a presentation on Kids Safe Program. Welcome, Joe, come on down.
Be able to share what I have for, let me put this in pause real quick. My name is Joe Salinas, a certified internet and child safety advocate. I've been an advocate for a long, long time, I'm not gonna read this, I'm just gonna talk heart. I've been an advocate for a long, long time, and went through a lot of adversity, been dead twice and things like that, and what I'm gonna present to you is a serious problem that's been going on. It went on when I was a child, and I later on went in life and just tried to forget about it, but I was rewoken up, rewoken up last August. That is still going on, and I think it's much more serious now than it was then, that it's approaching. But anyway, this is provided through a company that has a 10-year track record, you know, that's been, you know, openly publicly traded and things, and like many of you have heard too many stories of people using technology harming children, partnering with some of the nation's leading private and cyber safety experts and child safety advocates. ZAMZU is committed to itself to delivering tools to present that will help to protect children from some of the scariest digital dangers, predators, sexting, and cyberbullying. Sixty-three percent of teens said that they have been asked to meet offline by someone they have never met in their life. went to school, all of his hobbies, his interests, where he could find him at any given time of day. And he said to my son, "That's okay, I'll just come get you." And when they asked him, "Why is it that after this young man said that he was not interested in meeting you or pursuing this relationship, why did you continue?" He said, "Because he suited my appetite." Your child does not stand a chance with someone like that if you are not in the game. The reason I'm here is because, of course, I wanna help parents protect their children. If this program was available when I was a child, I wouldn't have been traumatized. Every time I was in school, I ran away from home so many times, and you know where I ran to? The police department, because I felt safe, because they were my heroes, and they're my heroes today. And it's pretty scary to live with that. You ask people, I could ask any of you people that are leaders of our community, of northern Nevada, and especially Sparks, if you would have been traumatized that way, you think you would have reached the position you have? No. I've accomplished a lot. I became an electrical engineer, and even though I had a lot of adversity, and still try to conquer, no matter what happened, you could try to push it behind you, it's always gonna be, every day you think about it. I don't dwell in it, it doesn't hurt me now, but it does make me mad that it still happens today, and we need to do something about it. We can't stop it, unfortunately, we just need to, you know, do something about it, just help taking care of kids.
Heard about sexting? 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 What? I was born before 1985, I have no idea what sexting is. Sexting? 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 Instead of texting, they call it sexting.
Sexting, is kids sending provocative pictures of each other, to each other.
Pictures traded with the click of a button.
They get pictured on their phone.
They call it sexting, teenagers using cell phones to send nude or semi-nude pictures to a girlfriend or boyfriend. It's not only disturbing, it could be illegal. A new study says one out of five teens has sent them, and almost a third have received these inappropriate images.
In the Spokane School District, children as young as sixth graders have been caught sexting nude photos of themselves. It's hard to imagine why any self-respecting teen would bear it all on a cellphone photo, but one in five young kids has already done it.
It is a problem. It's a big problem, people, they send sexy text messages more than people think they do.
Some youngsters consider sexting a form of high-tech flirting, but the intimate messages rarely stay prime.
I nearly had.
Taken too much. But anyway, I would like to bring the city of Sparks some revenue, registering this park as a free agent, where it's offered to the community, and our goal in our company is to offer it free for every family. Right now, there's a small cost, 'cause it's beginning, but our goal is to have, and it's been approved, getting grants, to have this free to entities, and there is ways to generate income, generate revenue, and if I can bring, have a way to bring some revenue to the city of Sparks, that would be something we could use it for, special fund in the police department, whatever it could be designated to. Let me see if I go...
Of eight to 12-year-olds are now carrying cell phones, and authorities say that's made cell phones the perfect tool for child predators.
Child predators.
Sexual predators.
Sexual predators.
We begin tonight with the grim nationwide battle against sexual predators. The front lines are shocking.
The Sears catalog for child predators, those internet social networking sites. Just this week, Connecticut's Attorney General added Facebook to the list of sites he says are not doing enough to protect young people. In recent days, MySpace revealed it removed 29,000 convicted sex offenders from its website.
These predators are always going to go where the children are.
One night, her youngest got a chat message from someone named Brandon.
All it said was hello, and so I was like, that's kinda weird.
Liz didn't know any Brandon, and just hit delete, but a few minutes later, he was back.
The second message said, like, hello, are you playing a game?
Again, Liz deleted the message, but again, Brandon came back.
Third message said, what kind of game are you playing? Is it a game with animals? Like, I have animals. Do you have any pets? That's when like the mom radar kinda went off, that's okay, something's not right.
I still think parents are not as savvy, they're aware, but I don't think they know what's going on. We have this whole new world of the internet, and it's the, you know, private hunting ground for the predators. My son's 14, he says to me, Dad, you're a dinosaur, you don't really know what I'm doing, and Cox just did a survey saying that one in four kids say their parents don't have any idea what they're doing in chat rooms, or they're texting, or sexting, or whatever.
Parents need to be parents, and so whether your child has a cellphone or they have access to the internet, they still need to be monitoring their children. We are moving in an unsafe direction because we are giving children things that they don't know what to do with. They're having too much access, too much power, too much openness to things that they don't know how to handle.
Public, and to certify folks, 'cause not everybody can do this, you know, even the most wicked person could get involved in things that you don't, you need to get everybody certified and things, and one thing I'd like to point out is, the person who I became a victim of, he's been in and out of prison, and of things he's done, and other children and things, and the bad part that he's been in and out, they let him out. We need to do something to stop this completely, it's gonna be difficult, but my goal is to help parents prepare their children instead of repairing them when they're my age, at 55. I still get traumatized, but you know what, I still go forward. It's not about me anymore, it's about our future, for our children to be in your position, and governors, and presidents, and doctors, and lawyers, and all that has to do with our voting for us, because it's pretty scary out there. And I've supplied, you know, workshop agenda, we can go through it, we can schedule it, and it'll be free to the public, whether it's schools, any public entity that could be, have these workshops available to the public, and there's pledges where some kids don't want their parents to be watching them and things, but it's just a tool, you know, there's a page that has a lingual workshop, it should be in your, and the thing that I provided, and most kids could answer these. Can we? I've been involved, I can't answer them all, but there are some things that they're pretty odd, and if there's any questions, anything that, to further on, this is just a very short time, but just to present, I wanna have people be aware, most of them already. I didn't get to tell my mom until I was 21 years old, you know, I don't wanna go into details, but I finally did, you know, and that was pretty old, and I lived through that all my life, traumatized, and you don't want your children to do that, you don't want your children to think, you want them to become those leaders and professionals that we need. Any questions?
Questions for Joe. Thanks, Joe, and you'll leave your contact information to us, so if we need to get all of you, Ken?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for doing an awareness program, I know it's pretty, the numbers you showed us there are pretty staggering, really, with young people on the internet and sexting and all that stuff, it's hard for an old man like me to understand that kinda stuff, but I guess it goes on.
For all of us.
Exactly. Thanks, Joe. So let's go back to 4.2, presentation on the 2011 legislative session. Cast of thousands. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, City Manager Carey, out of Bayberry, Committee Relations Manager. Good afternoon, it's a pleasure for us to present the legislative recap for the 76th session of the Nevada State Legislature. Kathy Cluett and our legislative strategists, Rocky Vincit will present a recap and answer your questions. We want to thank the city council for adhering to the programs and policies... for adhering to the programs and policies and platforms that we've established earlier this year. And particularly want to thank the Mayor and Councilwoman Ratty for their quick and responsive responses on policy direction that we needed throughout the last 120 days or so. And particularly want to acknowledge Kathy Cluit. Kathy was down there a better part of her life for 120 days. Was down there in the early mornings, the late evenings, and monitored everything. And that was taking place and did a remarkable job for her. So I'd like to bring up Rocky, and Kathy will review the presentation. Thank you. Thanks, Adam. I know you spent a few, I know you spent a few days down there yourself. I remember I sent you some emails or some texts so you could wake up once in a while.
Good afternoon. For the record, Kathy Cluit, Government Affairs Coordinator. And to my left is Rocky Finseth, Principal of Carrera Nevada. This is just a short summation of the fund that we had for the last 120 days for the 2011 Legislative Session. The philosophy that we followed when we were down there was based on the legislative platform and policies, which was approved by the council in September 2010. That is something that comes back forward to you every year, and you get to look at it again. And we decide what's important to the city or not, or how we want to handle different situations during legislative and non-legislative session years. There is a legislative team, which is composed of the Mayor, Councilwoman Ratty, Manager Sean Carey, Assistant City Manager Steve Driscoll, Committee Relations Manager Adam Mayberry, myself, and Rocky. And please jump in at any time with any questions or comments, if you can't wait for the good stuff. Session parameters, it is 120 days. It actually goes till 1:00 a.m. on June 7th, as opposed to June 6th. That includes weekends and holidays. There are a bunch of different, very important dates as far as when bills have to be out of certain committees, out of their respective first houses, budget bills. And that's what, this is just a summation of these days. So you can see that the budget bills don't even have to come out of committee until June 1st. And yet, session ends five days later. So it always makes the last week or two very, very interesting down there. Coming up, this is a summation of some of the bigger bills that the city tracked, not all of them, and how we did it. We did it by our internal database system, which is called LegisPoint. Over 1,200 bills were introduced. I actually had the thrill of looking at all of them to determine whether or not it was even applicable to the city. If it was applicable to the city, it then was logged, registered, sent out to the respective department heads. And they decided on whether or not we needed to monitor the bill, not monitor the bill, if we were going to monitor it. Do we need to work on getting it amended? You know, just watch it? I mean, that was kind of up to the department heads on how we wanted to handle the different bills that we were looking for the city. The other site that we use, the legislative site actually has a wonderful bill-tracking site, which is called Personalized Bill Tracking. As a city, we get to have access to that for free. I think other people pay anywhere from $200 to $500 for that access during the session. This allows you to, all the committees will send you updates immediately upon posting so you know exactly what's coming on the agendas, you know, what's coming forward, when they're going to have meetings, take things off, put things on. It was instrumental in keeping everybody on task. The other system they started this year, which was brand-new, was their NELIS system, N-E-L-I-S. And they tried to cut down on using paper at the legislative session this year. And that worked to a certain extent. What they would do is, before a meeting, a committee meeting, they would actually post everybody's paperwork on it. So if we had come forward with an amendment, that's when it would show up. That's when you would finally see if people were changing bills, what they were trying to do. They weren't so much giving out the paperwork when you'd get to the committee meetings. So it became very important to have computer access immediately and always. So you'll see a lot of people probably going to chiropractors, especially if they weren't lugging around their iPad 2s, if they had real computers. It was very important to have some sort of online access at all times now. And we were very lucky to have three interns from UNR during the session. They were mostly in my office on a rotating schedule. When and if they could, if they had full days off, they came down to Carson so they could meet the legislators. A couple of them were able to get onto the Assembly floor with their respective legislator so they could see what was happening on the floor during a floor session. And they really enjoyed that. It was a nice thing for their legislators to get them down there and let them learn that. The interns earned class credit. We did not give them any money. And they did a lot of the bill updating on LegisPoint while they were watching meetings. So they were very, very instrumental this year. We were very lucky to have the three women that we did. Rocky and I had the pleasure of being down there every day. And we were able to, you know, communicate to each other all the time via a lot of texting and just reading emails and phone calls, and keeping the legislative team on track and answering any questions, or running to them for answers when we needed questions right away answered. So amongst the many bills that were coming out, they seemed to have a theme this year. And they were going after a lot of issues with purchasing and contracting issues. One of the first bills that actually came out, it made it through in almost record time, was AB 144, which became effective on 4/27. Which meant, the very next day, Mr. Maron, who was having prospective contracts going out for bids, had to totally go and redo the way that, really, the City of Sparks had to do some of its business. And he had to educate all the people walking in the door on how they had to now start filling out this new form, all the information that was required on it. The interesting part of this is, at some point, people understood that because you made a bill effective so quickly, which was effective upon passage, as opposed to waiting until July 1st, or October 1st, or some other date, it created a lot of challenges, which therefore necessitated the introduction of AB 574 to fix all of the unintended consequences from AB 144. I think that's the first time I've ever seen a bill go out, get signed, have problems, come back as a new bill to fix it in the same session. It happened in less than a month. So things move pretty fast down there. There were a lot of purchasing bills. AB 228 is now, they turned that into an interim study committee. We'll talk about that in a little bit. AB 330, you have to report privatization contracts. AB 413 was Mr. Daley's bill to allow changing the retention amounts. We already did it. This really isn't going to impact Sparks, but it was impacting some of the other local governments and municipalities. But we were okay with this one. SB 82 allowed local agencies to post bid notices on their websites. We do that now, but this took away the requirement that you also had to totally do it in the newspaper. So this was giving some of the local governments leeway. If they had a website that could do it, they were now officially allowed to do it, instead of having to pay for the newspapers. SB 268, it requires reporting of all contracts with design professionals, which are engineers, architects, people like that. It does have an impact on Sparks. You do have to make certain reporting requirements to the state. The good news is, we have Dan Maron, and he's on top of all of these. And as part of his professional organization, they were following all of these as well. So they've been working with the state throughout the interim, and they will continue to do so. So that's a good thing. AB 59, they had a lot of open-meeting laws. A lot of them did not go anywhere. They died in their respective houses. But two of the ones that did make it through, AB 59, which was going to require an impact at a local level, we were able to get it amended out so it just made it to quasi-governmental entities. Because it basically would have made it that if Councilwoman Kerrigan and Councilwoman Schmidt had passed in the hallway, we'd be allowed to talk to each other. We thought that was a little overkill, so we were able to get, working with other entities and the AG's office.
Sure.
This was the AG office's bill, and they realized what, you know, how bad that was going to be to local government. So they actually took it out themselves.
I have a question, Kathy.
Uh-huh.
Go ahead, Mike.
Kathy, on the open-meeting law bills, this includes the legislature?
Most of the time, no.
Most of the time?
No.
Do they even have an open-meeting law for the legislature?
They do have rules that they're supposed to follow as far as posting meetings and so on. But if they declare...
Suspend the rules.
They can suspend the rules, and then it...
So these are all the open-meeting laws for everybody underneath the legislature, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
AB 257 allows for more public comment during the meeting. Sparks already does this. So it's not going to impact us. I mean, the city clerk looked at this. The city attorney looked at this and said, "We already do this." So this was of no impact to Sparks. It did make a big difference in a lot of other municipalities' lives. So this was quite a big bill for them. And Rocky is going to handle the next two bills.
Good afternoon, everybody. On the economic development front, AB 449 was a major initiative on behalf of the Sandoval administration, along with leadership in both the Senate and the Assembly, to kind of revamp and redevelop how the state has deals with and has dealt with economic development activities for a number of years. The approach that AB 449 took was more of a regionalized approach towards economic development, recognizing that there are particular challenges in Northern Nevada. They're different from rural Nevada, as well as Southern Nevada. And it also took an approach of involving more of the local governmental entities, as well as the state, in economic development. In addition, it created a catalyst fund for economic development initiatives. It's patterned after another state, I believe it's Texas, that has been very successful with its catalyst fund. On the revenue and tax front, yes.
Before we move on from that? Can, have they decided how they're going to go about organizing these different regions? And who's going to control them? And who's made up of what? And, yeah, when you say it's for local, I mean, local for Northern Nevada's, where do we draw the lines?
Councilman, for the record, Rocky Finseth of Carrera Nevada. I think it is, the model I would use is EDON, as we know, in Northern Nevada, as well as N-NDA have historically been the two economic development drivers, NDA in Southern Nevada. I think that model, as we know it today, may or, may continue. But I think that there are opportunities for other regionalized approaches, or regionalized models to be created. I think the die is still getting cast relative to what this will ultimately look like two years from now. So I think it's still very much an open book.
So that was my next question. Is, so it'll take two years to shake this all out and figure out how the organization's going to?
For the record, Rocky Finseth. Councilman, yes, I would say, again, EDON and N-NDA and NDA, I think are relooking, I know for a fact EDON is looking at its model and its infrastructure and its makeup in deciding how it adapts to AB 449 and the impacts of AB 449.
And then one last question. Does this create a cabinet-level position for the governor, this bill?
There's at least two levels of, yes, it does have a, yes, it is a cabinet-level position, but it also creates a higher-level entity that involves now the governor, the lieutenant-governor, the Speaker of the Assembly, the Majority Leader. In understanding Nevada's unique role of, when businesses come to Nevada, the fact that public officials, like all of you, are very accessible to businesses looking to relocate here, they want to take advantage of that aspect.
Thank you.
Revenue and taxes. There were several proposals dealing with revenues and tax structure. AB 569 was a proposal to create a transaction tax. SB 491 was a bill that created a margin tax here in Nevada. Both of those bills did not make, did not pass. AB 582 was a bill that was introduced the last day of the session, which would have put a question on the 2012 ballot about enacting a transaction tax and a margin tax. That died as well. Although I would expect that there are some interest groups out there that I think may run a ballot initiative on new tax policy.
And the good news, our city charter bill, AB 97, passed. Went through both houses, and the governor signed it. It was, went through pretty quickly. That was wonderful. I've affectionately called SB 506 the zombie bill. It encompassed all parts of SB 100, 214, and AB 183. All three of these bills were dead. They were dead. AB 183 had actually been vetoed by the governor. So this shows you what can happen. Anything can happen. They brought back these three bills. SB 100 actually has to do with LIDs. The City of Henderson needed some help. Henderson needed some help. They've created LIDs. The people behind them are having... The example was, they wanted to put a water tank structure up here. They couldn't get it up there based on what the LID was. They needed to move it. Therefore, they had to go in and actually change the parameters of the LID. So they worked a long time on trying to get those parameters changed. We actually worked with them. The way the bill originally came out, it made it sound like if any parameters were changed within an LID... Bill came back. SB 214 was Senator Hardy's bill about doing the toll road bypass down in Boulder City. That had also died. It came back in this bill. And AB 183 was Assemblywoman Smith's school bond bill, which everybody remembers the governor vetoed. And once the Supreme Court made its discovery on the budget, the governor did tell Ms. Smith that he would allow that to come back and he wouldn't veto it. So those three bills all got wrapped up in SB 506, which sailed through. There was a lot of push to figure out grants, how to get money into the state, how to better utilize the grant process. The bill that finally made it out was SB 233. It does only apply to the state and all of its agencies. There was a lot of concern on some of the other cities and counties that we have people that can do grant process writing and functions, and that it would just create another layer for us, so they took all of local governments out, which was good. It was just the state. One of the other bills that did not make it through was voting-in-the-ward-only bill, SB 304. The governor did veto that on the last day of his veto power, on the 17th of June. The other bill that died was the ethics bill, SB 391. That was a bill that we were very closely monitoring. City attorney staff came down on both sides, actually, on the Senate side and the Assembly side, to offer testimony on this bill. It did not make it out of the Assembly Legislative Operations Committee. That's where it died. The home rule bill, SB 285, had a lot of great hope for this bill, and it just never made it out of Assembly Government Affairs on the last day that the bills could have come out of committee.
A lot of lip service.
I'm sorry?
A lot of lip service, is all.
I don't know if there was so much lip service. It just... That last day, the last day, when bills have to make it out of that second committee to get out to their next house, I think feelings run really high, and people get a little more excited than they probably should, and this is just one of the bills that didn't quite make it.
Yeah.
There are a lot of bills that didn't make it out of committees.
A lot of lip service. Mr. Kerrigan.
Who chaired that committee?
Assembly Government Affairs.
Yeah.
That was Assemblywoman Marilyn Kirkpatrick from down south.
Thank you.
From North Las Vegas. One of the bills that did make it through, SB 98, this turned out to be one of the bargaining chip bills to get the budget bills all passed. SB 98 did make some changes to collective bargaining. Any specific questions on it? Exactly it all means. I think, you know, some groups think it means one thing, and other groups think it means another, so that's something that is going on. There are a lot of discussions going on for that. As part of a conglomeration of cities, we have started a survey with the other local governments, including the big five cities, for counties and 10 cities to figure out what this really does mean, because, you know, counties and cities are structured differently, and even within that, they're structured differently within and amongst themselves. So everybody is trying to figure out what this really means to them, based on what their current structure is. There was a public safety bill, AB 265. This made sure that it was official, that police officers were allowed to have representation when they would go in for any meetings. If it was a one-on-one kind of a meeting, they were allowed to bring in representation from their union and/or someone from the outside. That was one our public safety group was looking after. Public nuisance and abandoned properties bill, this was carried by Mr. Bobzine on behalf of the city of Reno, and it did pass. Joe Rodriguez is following up with this to make sure that we can take full advantage of this as a city. And the last bill of the session, which was signed with one minute before signing D I, is this... We love to call it the star bond bill, AB 376, and then it just turned out to be so much more. We actually... City manager Kerry, Assistant City Manager Driscoll, and myself, we were in a room with Ms. Smith, the city of Reno, union representation, and the LCB to actually work on making this bond bill workable. They were just trying to clear it up, and then it turned out that this was the hostage bill for the entire session. And they ended up tacking on three more parts to this bill. This is the bill that has... North Las Vegas gets to make some sewer changes. City of Reno gets to... Which they did discuss in their last week meeting, and they are going to go forward with this. They are going to start charging $2 per bed in a room tax that goes straight to the city of Reno, specifically to pay for improvements of their public facilities within their tourism improvement district and to within one mile of their tourism improvement district. They did that to include the livestock event center. So the thought is they're going to redo a lot of things for the bowling stadium and the livestock event center, and then they'll start taking care of some of their other properties with this.
$2... You said $2 per bed. $2 per room or $2 per bed?
They're calling it the $2 per bed head, but I'm not calling it the room. It's another $2 on top of the room that goes directly for that.
Okay.
And the other one was that possibly Washoe County could create a district that could then... It would only encompass the arena, the minor league arena in Reno, and it would... They could possibly start imposing a 12% surcharge, up to 12%, on anything you buy within the stadium district. And now on to the fun topic of redistricting.
Goes to court.
Great. As most of you know, as all of you know, this was the first session that we really dealt with term limits and its impacts. And with the gavel coming down on the 2011 session, there were a total of five legislators who have termed out four in the Senate, one in the Assembly. Senator McGinnis, Senator Rhodes, Senator Schneider, and Senator Weiner, along with Speaker Osagara, are now all termed out of their House seats. What we saw with the 2009 term limits is that you had a lot of movement between the Houses, primarily Assembly folks moving into the Senate, one senator moving back into the Assembly. We expect more of that type of movement with these retirements of these legislators. And certainly, once redistricting itself is resolved, we may see more. Generally, there were several redistricting proposals. Two in particular were approved by the body, primarily on partisan lines, sent to the governor, and he vetoed both of those. So by the time that we left Carson City, the legislature did not pass a redistricting plan. Some general themes, though, of those proposals was that there was no appetite to increase either the size of either House. And in most of those proposals, Washoe County ended up losing a state senate seat. The Rurals lost a state assembly seat. Ultimately, it would appear that the Supreme Court is going to be left to make a decision on redistricting. As of the development of this proposal or this presentation, Governor Sandoval has indicated that he has no intention of bringing the legislature back for a special session for redistricting. And the other thing we do know is that Nevada will receive an additional congressional seat.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Rocky, when is the date that redistricting has to be done? Or is there a... Excuse me. Is there a date that redistricting has to be done by?
For the record, Rocky Finseth. Councilman, I don't know the answer. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I don't. I don't believe that there's anything formal, but I'd prefer to probably get back to you on that.
I appreciate that, because I can't remember the rules on this. Is there any... Any importance for the Supreme Court to meet and get started on this sometime? You know, that's just my curiosity. When does this have to be done by? Thank you.
In terms of... In terms of... Bringing the presentation to a conclusion, I think most of you are aware that there was a significant Supreme Court decision that really drove the session to a close. On May 26, the Supreme Court overturned a lower court ruling dealing with a lawsuit that was brought forth by the entity called the Clean Water Coalition. The net result of that decision was that the 2010 special session of the legislature, of the previous legislature, had taken $62 million from the Clean Water Coalition in order and used it to balance the budget. The Supreme Court ruling on May 26 ruled that that was an unconstitutional taking and ruled in favor of the Clean Water Coalition. That decision quickly drove the legislature and the governor to reconvene over a course of a five-day period in order to resolve whatever outstanding budget differences they had. And as Kathy pointed out in the start of the presentation, then they were able to submit a budget bill on June 1st.
Okay. Interim committees. There are more than these four, but these are the four that could possibly directly impact the city. One of the bills that came forward, AB 71, was then turned into a C-Tax study during the interim committee. Purchasing Practices Study, AB 228, like I said, that was a bill that was supposed to be more. It was made to be down or put down to an interim committee study. AB 427 is a study on recyclables from Assemblyman Orangehall. This could impact us, because it's... They could go down the route of, you know, forcing to recycle how much it's going to get paid for in the city or within the state. And then therefore, that's going to impact all of, you know, the franchise fees that everybody has for the different garbage services that they have. So we'll be watching that one. And then ACR 12, it was a structure... It's a study that's going to look at the structure of the legislature. Should it stay how many seats it is? Should it go the year round? How should they be paid? How much should they be paid? Those kinds of questions. So that's the one that we're definitely going to be following to see what it is they're set to come out with.
Questions? John Kerry.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to first extend a thank you to the mayor and council for the adoption of your platform for the legislative session. That was very, very helpful in guiding us through some 1,200 bills. I also want to thank Gino Martini and Julia Ratty for their many hours they spent looking at the particular bills that were of issue during the session. And I think the council really saw the fruits of your change in direction by using a legislative lobbyist. Rocky's firm did a tremendous job in advising the city on the various traps that exist in a complicated legislative process. And I think we were well represented and did use his sage advice on many strategy things. In lieu of clothing, I wanted to express a lot of thanks to Kathy. What you did during this last session was really one of the most extraordinary things I've seen a city employee do. And it was a tremendous give back to this organization. And you put in lots of hours, and you were reading day and night and weekends, and I want you to know that that made all the difference in the world for our legislative success as you're my personal hero. Thank you.
Thanks to both of you and Adam and Steve Driscoll, who's not here. I think the process worked great this time around. It's the best I've seen since I've been here. Kept us out of the paper and out of trouble with certain legislators who can be very volatile and have very thin skins. I won't mention any names, so I don't get David Jacobs putting somebody's name in the paper here. So I think the process worked good. And I want to thank the council. I think the council is the one that pushed for having someone to advise us instead of having to have someone, a professional lobbyist, at the table every day. You know, we counted on staff. I went down a few times. Julie went down a few times. Mike and Ron Smith and Ron Schmidt and Ed Lawson, everybody were down there, I think, once or twice to testify in their particular places of expertise, and I think it worked great. And Rocky, thank you so much for what you've done for us at really a great price. I think we... I don't know if you got your money's worth, but I know we did, so I appreciate that. Kathy, thanks to you. So any other questions on this particular item? Okay. Thanks. Let's move on to consent items. I know we want to pull... Mr. Kerrigan would... Okay. Consent items. Anybody want to pull any consent items? If not, looking for a motion. Punch in, somebody. Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve consent items 51 through 59. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Let's move on to General Business, 6.1. Consideration and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointment to the Civil Service Commission, Sparks Advisory Committee for the Disabled, and the Sparks Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Kerry, you want to handle this? I see you're feverishly trying to get there.
Yes, I am. Mayor and council, the mayor has placed before you the recommendation to appoint Michael Rainey to the Civil Service Commission for the Sparks Advisory Committee for the Disabled, Ray Faith, Carol Faith, and Mary Ann Whitbecker, and to the Sparks Parks and Recreation Commission, Mr. David Sexton. At this time, the city council may confirm these appointments as recommended by the mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Move to confirm all appointments.
You have a second, Mr. Kerrigan. Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Kerrigan to approve agenda item 6.1, as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 6.2. Consideration and possible approval of a reappointment to the Regional Planning Commission. Mr. Kerry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city has one appointment for a three-year term to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission. The mayor has placed before you the recommendation from the Planning Commission of Jackie Peterson to serve in this capacity. At this time, the council can accept their recommendation.
Mr. Schmidt?
Move to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Kerrigan to approve agenda item 6.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.3. Is consideration and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of an appointment to the Regional Planning Governing Board. Mr. Kerry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is purely a housekeeping measure. We would ask you to confirm your prior decision to appoint Mike Kerrigan to the Regional Planning Governing Board, and this would be effective June 30, 2011.
Mr. Schmidt?
Before he says "now," move to approve.
Mr. Lawson, second. Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve agenda item 6.3. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
I just... It's a hard one.
You can't abstain, either. Passes unanimously. 6.4. Consideration and possible approval of accounting policies necessary to comply with Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54-GASB-54. Your favorite subject, Mr. Kerry.
Yours and mine.
Yeah, yours and all of ours.
Good afternoon. For the record, Jeff Kronk, Financial Services Director. I have before you the culmination of some accounting policies that we have to have passed in order to comply with GASB-54. If you recall, I gave you a wonderful presentation last March, and everybody was so excited to hear. This is the culmination of a little bit more understanding, gathered input from you on some policies. And as promised, true to my word, I bring it back for you today for consideration. So in essence and in short, I've got four policies that need to be approved today. One being the Order of Fund Balance category spending priority within the restricted and unrestricted fund balances, and also within the committed, assigned, and unassigned fund balances. Two, determination of level of authority and actions leading to the creation of committed and assigned fund balances, fund balance categories. Third policy, stabilization arrangements regarding the funding and use of the stabilization fund. And then the fourth policy is a general fund, minimum fund balance. So we can do this two different ways. I wrote everything out, and we could either, you know, go through this, answer questions, or I can go policy by policy and discuss what we want to do. So...
I'll make that decision. We can pick that question.
I did come prepared and brought a little bottle of Excedrin, because this can be a little painful.
Questions for Mr. Kronk? Motion. Mr. Lawson?
I move to approve.
I move to approve.
You have a second? Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve agenda item 6.4. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Schmidt?
Just want to make sure that the motion on the table is for all policies, because there's, there's motions for each individual policy. And Jeff, you need to tell me if all four. Any of those policies require a specific motion, because you have recommendations on all these things and everything in here. So I want to just clarify before this motion goes through that, is there any one of those policies that need a clarification before the vote is done?
As they're, as they're written, you can make one motion for all four policies. As they're written, they would be acceptable.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So you know for the questions, please vote. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. When's the next time we'll get to hear about GASB 54?
You don't want that here.
I know I don't. 6.5, consideration and possible adoption of Resolution 3202 to augment the 2010-11 Impact Fee Service Area Fund. Welcome.
Stacy Hammerling, Budget Administrator. Sorry, I forgot. It's City Sparks Finance Department. This item is asking you to adopt a resolution to augment the budget of the Impact Fee Service Area 1 Fund. We need this budget augmentation to cover the costs of a payment we made to Washoe County this year, to cover our, our share of the Spanish Springs Detention Facility. The agreement was signed in 2005, took many years. The final amount was not known, and it came to be that we needed to pay it this year, but we didn't have it in the budget. We did have the cash, just not the budget. So this is cleanup of a budget issue, so we don't have a violation.
Questions for Stacy. Mr. Kerrigan?
This is just the, we paid for this already, but now we're augmenting it from an impact fee that we have collected. Is that correct? I just want to get that on the record.
It was collected for that purpose.
Okay.
It just was not, just didn't get in the budget six years in a row, and we didn't know when we would have to pay it.
Okay. So we're just paying for work that's done out of impact fees in that one area?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
And this pays us off. This, our debt is retired.
With the Spanish Springs Detention Facility, yes.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our payment is $1.8 million.
No, the payment wasn't 1.8. It was 2.7, I believe.
2.7 in total.
We had, we had some budget authority in the fund. This is what we could augment by to cover the rest of it.
Where was this 1.8 million from the budget the council gets and we get to take a look at? Was this included in our ending fund balance? Was it not included in our ending fund balance? Where was this 1.8 million residing at?
It was a different, you know, not general fund, in the Impact Fee Fund. So the budget document would have shown it in the ending fund balance. In fiscal 10s actuals, in the CAFR, you would have seen an ending fund balance in that fund. And we could augment from that for this fiscal year.
Okay. So, well, I'm trying to remember when I've seen a document that says Impact Fee Service Area 1 Fund, it says we got $2 million sitting in it, or more.
The budget, the budget document for this, that we just filed for fiscal year 12, would have shown fiscal 10s actuals and an ending fund balance in that fund. 12-10 is the number. Then we would have shown a projection for that ending fund balance being much less in 11, because we made that payment in 11.
And I understand what you filed. I'm asking, what was the council showing?
What was?
Was this, was this account ever shown to the council that we have money sitting in this account?
In the fiscal 10 audited financial statements would.
Yeah. I'm talking about the budget we just passed.
The budget document was included in approval of the final budget.
Okay. If I can just go ahead and get the copies of all that, then I'd sure appreciate it. And add any other funds that we have, a couple million dollars sitting on out there. You know, any amount of reserves, I'd like to see what we have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Kerrigan?
Yeah, I was going to make sure. I think what Ron was asking for is what's the line item number? You know, like a lot of our funds for sewer fund, maybe 1201 or 13?
1210.
1210, that's what it's about. Okay. So it's in 1210?
Mm-hmm. It's a special revenue fund, so the schedule Bs of the budget document are in front order, and you'll be able to see that. I'll send it to you.
That's what I thought I heard you say. Thanks.
Further questions? Not looking for a motion. Mr. Kerrigan?
I move for approval of Resolution 3202.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Kerrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve Resolution 3202. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Stacy. 6.6, consideration and possible approval of Amendment Number 3 to the Cooperative Agreement between the City of Reno, Washoe County, and the City of Sparks for Services related to the operation of the Homeless Community Assistance Center. Mr. Aronellis.
Hello, Martini, members of the council. Armando Aronellis, City Planner. The purpose of this Amendment Number 3 to the Cooperative Agreement is essentially to extend the existing agreement for about 60 days through August 31st, until a new agreement can be negotiated between the parties to continue funding and administration of the Community Assistance Center. So the, you know, the City of Sparks, for the next year, for the year that begins July 1, would commit $84,976 in CDBG funding. In reality, the, this Amendment Number 3 only commits two months' worth of that funding. But basically, until those, until a new agreement can be brought forward or negotiated and brought forward, and really, by and large, that's, that's an agreement that's being hashed out between Reno and Washoe County, this just keeps the doors open to the CAC.
What is the agreement with the operator? Are they still working on who's going to operate or not?
Well, you know, the, as you know, the county undertook an RFP process, and there was a recommendation. That's supposed to be on the county commission's agenda this week. I think it's, it's all pending, you know, all three of the entities, first of all, extending for the 60 days. And then secondly, I think the conclusion of those negotiations as to who is going to be the lead agency for the CAC.
Okay. Questions for Armando? Mr. Smith?
Armando, I thought the Catholic Community Services was taking that over.
Well, that's, that was the, the recommendation essentially that came out of the RFP process.
Okay. So that's going to the commission?
That is, that is scheduled to be considered by the county commission this week.
Okay.
Along with this extension.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kerrigan?
Is that, is that the company that Reno wants?
No.
No, the, the current operator is, for the CAC is Volunteers of America, VOA. And, you know, if Reno were to continue in the lead agency role, I think that would be their preference. That's what they-
Okay. So Washoe County is going to, is going to pick up that?
Well, that's, that's, that's what's been proposed. Again, I don't believe that these, these discussions between the county and the, and the City of Reno have been concluded yet. But what's been discussed, and frankly, if, if you review, if you've read the, the agreement that's actually attached to the staff report, that's what's contemplated, is that the county would take over the lead.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. And now that's, that's contemplated, but that's not happening.
Well, it's not, it's not been concluded.
Yeah. Okay. So what happens if it goes the other way, and they say, we're not going to do it, and Reno takes it over? They're going to go with the Volunteers of America?
Well, I, I think there's some legal questions there. I mean, there was an RFP process, so I don't know if you would rescind that process and, and do a new process under the City of Reno. Because again, the, the RFP process that was conducted was done by the county as the, as the lead on the RFP process. You would have to probably terminate that and go back and do it again. So.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
Move for approval Amendment Number 3 to the Cooperative Agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
You have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Kerrigan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Armando.
Thank you.
City Council Reviewing Possible Direction on Process for Redrawing City Council Ward Boundaries in Sparks. Mr. Mayor? It's a lot easier to do in Yerick, isn't it? One word. Little senior planner? Whoop, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we get started on this particular agenda item, we heard some testimony from a prior agenda, presentation on the legislation that passed, attempted to pass. And as you can tell, the Nevada Legislature is really looking at our open meeting law. Every session, there is another bill proposing to tie that up and make it even more stringent and onerous on all of us as public officials. This particular agenda item involves a Sparks Municipal Code provision involving the redistricting of our wards based upon the change in the population figures. And reviewing that in light of the Nevada Attorney General's opinions on our open meeting law, the Nevada Supreme Court decisions on the open meeting law, the Nevada Legislature's incessant attempts to make that law even more unworkable for all of us as public officials to do what it is that we need to do. I've come down on the side of caution here, and I believe that our municipal code provision, as it relates to the redistricting, does arguably offend Nevada's open meeting law, simply because it gives elected officials, not that anybody would ever do this, but it gives the elected officials the discretion to conduct serial meetings in contravention of our open meeting law in the state of Nevada. Because of that, our office has been working with Mr. Rundle, who has come up with a, an idea as far as workshops. And I think that that is probably the, the best way to address this particular issue, through a open and public process with open discourse and open, opening all channels, and especially those of transparency that the Nevada Legislature seems to demand upon us. So with that being said, and I wanted to, because I know Mr. Rundle was going to have to refer to our office, and so if there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to address those, without tempting to distract from Mr. Rundle's presentation as well.
Chad, can't we just wait till the last minute and then suspend the rules?
Well, unfortunately, we are not the Nevada Legislature.
Oh, okay. All right.
Obviously, our redistricting procedures are, do not mirror the Nevada Legislature's, and they can certainly go into hiding and conduct as many private meetings, non-public meetings. But again, Nevada redistricting has to do with political parties. And we're not necessarily that same animal. That's not to say you don't have your own individual interests and concerns over who it is that you represent. But nevertheless, in an attempt to get away from all of that, I would simply recommend that we follow the procedure being set out by Mr. Rundle. Okay?
Mr. Smith has a question.
I'm looking at this, this agenda item, and it, it's conflicting. In the first part, it says Title 2, Chapter 2.03.04 of the Sparks Municipal Code describes a process for redistricting following the decennial census. It specifies, and I'll go to B, each council person will have an opportunity to meet individually with staff to discuss any changes. And then C says staff will try to reconcile. And then it goes down to E again, and it says it again, each council person will then have an opportunity to meet individually with staff to discuss any changes. In the past, we've done exactly that without violating the open meeting law. So I'm not understanding.
And certainly in the past, we haven't had the benefit of the, the attempts by the Nevada Legislature to close, clamp down on the open meeting law. We certainly haven't had the benefit of our Nevada Supreme Court decisions on the open meeting law. I do not believe that that particular municipal code provision that is set out in your agenda items today is appropriate, and I do not believe it confirms with Nevada's open meeting law. So we may have, what we did in the past arguably was legal.
Was what?
Was, was legal, complied with the open meeting law. Or at least you got away with it.
But what about, like, right now, we're meeting two-by-twos. We don't have a quorum. Is that illegal?
The Nevada Attorney General has indicated that you can meet two-by-twos.
But not when, when?
Well, here's, here's the, here's the problem that you're going to have. I meet with Mr. Rundle, one-on-one. It's just, just me and Jimmy. Okay? Jim's a, a staff guy. I'm a city council member. Jim, this is what I want to do. But before I ask you this, what is it that Councilman A and Councilman B want to do? Well, Councilman A and Councilman B, they're kind of off-base. So why don't you go back and talk to Councilman A or Councilman B and get them to change their particular position on this? I'm not saying that this is actually going on, but I am saying that this is the potential. Now, one-on-one, it's just you and a staff person. Two-on-one, and typically you're meeting with the city manager, I don't have a problem with that, because the city manager reports directly to you, you work with the city manager. I have a problem, especially with our charter provision. This says that elected city council members may not, will not, in fact, it makes it a misdemeanor, to direct the actions of staff. All staff directions, all staff activity have to go through the city manager. Shaun, I want you to tell Jim, or I want you to direct your particular departments to do A, B, and C. So we've got yet another level, I believe, of frustration with staff, and probably another level of legalities that are confronting us when we allow this type of a situation to occur.
You know, I don't mean to interrupt you, but then we're all guilty, because we direct staff at every meeting. We always direct staff. It, it even asks us on our agenda item for direction. So.
It's-
It's in a public, public meeting.
He just, he just said that we can't give direction to staff, ever. Is that what you said?
No. What, what, what the intent of the law is, and what our charter is, is to prevent you from going individually to the Parks and Rec Department or Director outside of a public meeting, and telling the Parks and Rec Director to do A, B, C, and D. And then the Parks Director's going to say, well, Councilman A or B doesn't want me doing that. And now you get in this type of a conflict. Instead of going to the city manager and saying, city manager, I would like you to consider directing the Parks and Rec Director to engage in a particular act or activity, city manager may very well tell you, well, we can do that, but it has to be approved by the entire city council. Those are the types of protections we are not getting when we allow one-on-one meetings between city council and a staff person, not an official. Shaun Carey is an official, is an officer of the city. So we've got the charter concerns, and we've got the open meeting law concerns. And I think that the Sparks Municipal Code is simply a blueprint on how to violate the open meeting law. And that's why I'm, I, I would strongly urge you to engage in the process of redistricting through a series of public meetings.
Well, let me throw this up as a suggestion, and this is, this would be direction. Instead of meeting one-on-one with staff, why don't we have the city manager there with us?
All right. I'm just here to advise. You guys do, you guys do whatever you want.
I know, and it's your opinion, and I understand that.
And that's, that's all, all it is, is an opinion.
And I do appreciate that, Chad. It's just that we've done this before. I've, you can ask, get any staff member up here. I've never said, what does Mike Kerrigan think of this? I've never said that to anybody. But we, in the past, we've been able to give some input. Good, looks good to me. I don't, you know, or I don't like it. I don't see the problem now.
And all I'm saying is that if you want to provide that input, if you want to, you want to- want to provide your objections, those, that input, that objection should be made in an open meeting.
Okay, and I'll agree with you. The only thing I object to is why don't we have, why can't we see that before we get here? So instead of showing it up on the screen the first time we ever see it, and have a make as a decision? I don't agree with that. It's just like somebody coming and handing you the information just before the meeting and wants you to vote on it. So you're not saying we can't have the information before? Just can't?
On the redistricting?
Yeah.
Well, I think that that's contemplated in this whole scheme here.
Wait, and before you go, I got another question, so. Mr. Smith has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm kind of going to follow along with Mr. Smith's lines, that if this is, Sparks Municipal Code was rewritten on this, that two people could meet with staff, then that would be considered illegal. We can't meet one-on-one with Jim, but if we met two-on-one with Jim to discuss the plan, that's legal.
I'll tell you the truth, I would rather only have the city council meet two-on-one with the city manager.
Okay. Well, I'm going to give you a scenario that I just looked across this room in here. There's four people in this room that I have a standing meeting every single month at the same location to discuss business with in the city, and sometimes we discuss the same item two or three months until we can reach a conclusion to it. There's three more staff members that I have semi-regular meetings with to discuss issues about the city of Sparks that's going on. Some of those are one-on-one, some of those are two-on-one. Tell me which ones are illegal and which ones are legal.
Anytime you meet with a staff person that is not part of a public meeting, it's my opinion that that is a violation of the Sparks City Charter. If you're meeting with these people and directing them, telling them what to do, telling them what your desires are, where you believe they should be going, then I believe that you are directing individuals in contravention of the city charter. Now, if you want to meet with the city manager and have a meeting together, that's fine, but I don't think that's appropriate, sir.
I'm telling you, we've got departments all through here that set up these meetings. And it's been sanctioned, it's on our calendars, it's public knowledge we're meeting there. We have been doing it for years, whether it's one-on-one, two-on-one, two-on-twos, five-on-twos, you know, as long as there's no more than two elected officials on it, it's been considered perfectly legal to go and do that. And I think that, to me, where the law is very clear on is that I cannot ask staff how Councilman A. talked to him about that. I crossed the line when I do that, and staff crosses the line when they tell me how another elected official has said something. And that's on every single issue. That doesn't have to be on redistricting or anything. If I ask staff, "How is Councilman Lawson feeling about this thing?", I've crossed the line. That's a violation of open meeting law, and I put staff in a very, very bad position to do something like that. So that's my concern with this whole thing. It seems that we moved to a context-based discussion now about, because word boundaries come on up, that we have a context here that has to change with that. And I'm open to whatever we decide to go ahead and do here. My concern comes procedural-wise, is that we have a Sparks Municipal Code. What is the proper procedure for changing a Sparks Municipal Code? And when does a Sparks Municipal Code become invalid? We don't follow it anymore.
Okay, we are obviously getting a little bit further away from the agenda item. The Sparks Municipal Code is changed pursuant to this legislative body's approval. An amendment is brought to the body. The, we have post reading and a second reading. We have public input. We have a public hearing. Ultimately, the city council votes to amend the municipal code. Now, when does municipal code become invalid or wrong? It can become invalid or wrong anytime a district court judge rules against us. It can become invalid or wrong anytime Nevada Supreme Court, a Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, a United States Supreme Court decides that it's wrong. Now, if you want a city attorney's office that can review every ordinance for its constitutionality, for its current application, you're going to need about three or four more attorneys in that office. Sometimes, it takes an agenda item like this for us to review our code and say, "Hey, folks, I don't think you can do this anymore. I don't think that this particular code provision is good law in accordance with or in light of court decisions and legislative attempts to address Nevada's open meeting law."
And I appreciate the explanation. I just want to clarify how I view this as a council person, is that this agenda item, to me, is about the changing of a municipal code. We're talking about Title II, Chapter 2.03.04, is outlined, and then we have a city attorney's has advised staff that it's illegal. So I think we are talking about a change in a municipal code. I don't, as elected official, I have a three-page staff agenda here. I don't have anything from the city attorney's office outlining their position. I don't have anything. I heard about this on this, in a possibly illegal meeting between staff and myself telling me this is coming up on the agenda, this is what we've been advised, and I've seen no written statement of why, no correlation. So I've referred to my open meeting law book to see, okay, tell me what's in the open meeting law book, since this is illegal, and I'm coming up with something completely different. So, you know, I apologize, but we're sitting here in the middle of a meeting, just now finding out about all this and which direction it's going to go on something that has been in the works for months.
So have you got a proposal that you're going to give us, Jim?
The, yeah, the proposal.
Let's get to the proposal, and then we can discuss it and see which way we want to go here.
Well, the staff got the decennial census information and began work looking at what the wards looked like using the existing ward boundaries. Came up with a team. The team included the attorney's office at the time. That's when we identified that the Title II of the municipal code, which you're all talking about right now, may not be the most appropriate way to move forward with the process. So we were asked to come up with a different process, and that process is outlined on what is Page Two on my staff report. I guess it's not on your computer, so it would be Page Two on your staff report, and it ends on Page Three. Essentially, the process would be, we would, the staff would draft some scenarios and present them to the council. They wouldn't be necessarily for approval. At the first workshop, we'd sit at a meeting like this. We would discuss them. We would talk about potential changes or areas that we were okay with, whatever the council chose to talk about and make comment on. Based on that workshop meeting, I would try to draft changes that would accommodate the comments made at the first workshop, bring it back, and bring it back to another workshop where we would refine it once again until finally, at a third meeting, which I've estimated on here sometime potentially in October, we would come forward with a public hearing for final adoption or for formal adoption of a ward boundary.
Jim, I appreciate your, you know, your upfront on all this stuff, because I know this is a tough situation, but how many different possibilities with the maps are there?
Countless.
So there could be all kinds of maps on out there. What is the criteria that either staff or the city council has outlined for you to make that decision for the two that you're going to give to us? What criteria is going to be used?
The criteria would be used based on, I don't remember if it's in the charter or in the municipal code, but it is essentially that each ward boundary has the residence of each council person, that we balance each ward boundary, or each ward, excuse me, within 5% of the population, so that each ward is close to even as we can get it, that we use blocks. You don't divide, typically divide blocks, and that you use major arterials for boundaries whenever possible. That's the criteria I would be using.
And using that criteria, how many possible maps are there?
I don't know.
So then, what criteria, once you have all the possible maps or the two final maps produced?
Well, what, essentially, what I was going to try to do is come up with maps that we believe are defensible in terms of demographic information, that we weren't splitting voters' rights and that kind of thing, and make proposals to the council. Any of the proposals I make can be thrown out and asked to be completely redrawn, but there's no way I could come up with an exact depiction of how many possibilities there are.
But you're going to have to make a decision, right?
Yes, sir.
You have to make a decision on, let's say that you come up with 10 scenarios. You personally, or a group of staff, has to sit down and say, "These are the two we're going to bring to council."
Yes.
My question, is that fair? Is that a fair process that the six, five people that get affected by it, we don't get to see the possibilities that are out there? That's, and I don't think there's an answer to that question right now. I just asked if that's a fair process to go through, and then I'll ask the same question I did on the Nevada redistricting. When is this mandated to be done by?
I believe, I don't know the exact date, but we would want to get it done before people had to file for the ward, the ward boundaries that are potentially up for reelection.
And I do believe that that is the mandated date, is that the day before, you know, elections thing, that that's to do. And I don't know what the law is. I'm waiting for someone to go ahead and take them, because I don't think it's clearly defined what the law is, but you would think that, yeah, sometime before the date that you have to file for office that the boundaries are done. So the dates that you have in here are produced by staff, correct? These are not state law or city charter?
Correct.
We have nothing that says that these are the dates we're going to, we need to use?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, Jim.
Mr. Carrigan.
Thank you. So when we're talking about, the municipal code requires the population between wards not differ more than 5%, do you know what the number is? Because I'm sure that really the one that's affected the most is Ward Four. How much out of whack is Ward Four from the rest of the wards?
About 25%.
So Ward Four is 25% more, and that has been that way since?
I don't know when it became 25%, but based on the 2010 census, if you use, if I use the existing ward boundaries, it's, your ward is approximately 25% bigger than the average. I mean, you can't say bigger than, what I did is pick, if you take the population divided by five, it's approximately 25% bigger.
Yeah, and that is, I see as a big problem. Plus, the fact is, we have another thing we're not, and I agree with the city attorney. I don't have a problem with doing this in public at all, because it is a public thing. I don't care if we sit here all day long and try to do it. But the problem is that we have three of us, I think, that live within a mile of one another, and we're all supposed to be in the same ward, because I know that I was cut out of my ward twice before when we tried this, because, you know, it's almost impossible to do. So I know that the two Ron's and myself, I think we live within a mile, maybe even closer, and that gets to be the sticking point, isn't that right?
Well, the way the...
Yeah, so, yeah, I was going to say, so if the city buys me a house way out in Wingfield Springs, then we can take care of all that, right? So Jeff, you have any extra ca, no, I'm just kidding, please, don't say that, because I was really going to ask the city attorney just for a joke, that I have friends in Ward Four, and I also have done business in Ward Four. Am I still going to be allowed to vote? But that's, don't worry about that.
But the charter, or the code, I think it's the charter says that each council person where they live right now would have to be in their ward.
Right.
So we would not draw...
I'm trying to say that if...
We would not draw any of the five council, existing council people out of their ward.
And the reason I bring this up is maybe that we don't have to, can we adjust just three wards instead of five? Does that make sense, what I'm saying? In other words, if we shift that 25% to two, or to five and three, is that going to, is that going to throw one and two out of whack?
Yes.
Okay, well, because, you know, the problem I see, seriously, is that the majority of the people that, if I'm 25% out of whack, live way north of Los Altos, north Los Altos, I'm guessing. Because if you take a look at the way my ward, the only thing I have left south of that is the vistas.
Right.
And I don't think they grew that much, but, you know, Pioneer Meadows, Wingfield Springs.
Development we had in two thousand and six.
Yeah, the vineyards, yeah, I have a piece of the vineyards, but, I mean, the other ones out there are the ones that really grew. So I see this is, this is going to be a problem.
Right.
And the other part of the problem is going to be, some of us have represented the wards for a long time. I'm not sure if the public is going to want to go to a different ward. I'm just guessing.
Sure.
So how do we solve that? I guess we just come in here and hassle it out, or what?
Well, that's, what our, what we tried to come up with was a situation or a series of events that would allow us to, we would come up with some proposals, and we would have those proposals in such a case that if they ultimately went forward in some similar form to how they were presented, they would be legally defensible. If they weren't, if the appetite of the council was not to choose any of the alternatives, we would try to draft something else. As Councilman Schmidt said, we are bound, to an extent, by timeframe. So the best way we can think to do it is to bring it forward, and based on all the comments that have occurred today, is to bring some forward and have the council comment on them.
Yeah, and the reason I bring this up, of course, is because...
This is just a proposal.
People aren't, you know, and it's not just the city council, but it's the people we represent and that have been, and, I mean, I'm just going to take a guess that there's some people in Ward One that have been there a long time, and if you try to switch them out and put them in Ward Three, they may not be too happy about that.
Sure.
You know, so that's the other thing that I think we all have to take a look at, is that, you know, it's not only us up here, but it's the people we represent.
Sure.
Mr. Lawson?
I have a quick question for the city attorney. How do we fix the charter? If we're not in compliance, I mean, do we have to wait for two more years now?
You mean the ordinances as far as redistricting?
Yes.
Okay, we can, if you want, we can present you with a proposed amendment to the municipal code, which we believe would be a little more in line with...
So that's not part of the charter?
Well, no, it is not, no. The charter provision I spoke of earlier is that the prohibition from city council members directing staff.
Okay. The other, for Jim, is can we move this a little faster? I understand it's a complicated issue, but at the same time, it's just lines on a piece of paper, so.
Well...
I think it's fair to say that it could change people and how they enter a race or don't enter a race for the city council, you know, if we wait until October, you know, with the filing date, you know, being right on its heels.
Two things, Councilman Lawson, Councilman Schmidt, I think I said that the parameters for the ward boundaries, I didn't know if it was in the charter or the municipal code, and I have the municipal code here, and it says, the ward, the ward boundary includes the block in which the council person resides for that ward. And it might have been Councilman Carrigan, I'm not sure who I said it to, but it's in the, that part is in the municipal code.
Mayor Martini, Members of the Council, Armando, and Ellis. I think really what we're looking for today is direction as to how you want to proceed in terms of the redistricting process. I mean, we, number one, we have to redistrict, so it's not a choice of whether we redistrict or not, we have to do that. Secondly, as we've been advised by the city attorney's office, the process that's stipulated in the municipal code is problematic for the reasons that he reviewed with you. So we have a proposal here as to how do we go about redistricting. If this is not the way you'd like to proceed, then what we're looking for is direction as how alternatively you'd like to proceed. If you don't, for example, want us to bring forward to, you know, narrow it down as Councilman Schmidt has suggested is, finds problematic, and have specific maps brought forward, we could do this in a workshop agenda where we, you know, we provide... forward, we could do this in a workshop agenda where we, you know, we provide you the, you know, we set up the mapping software, and we try to work through it and develop those initial maps. But I think at the end of the day, each redistricting proposal, we have to weigh in terms of the criteria. You know, we can't redistrict anyone out of their existing ward. They have to be balanced in terms of population. And then, there's another layer, and we don't have all of this data yet, but, and we'll need to look at this very carefully, you know, we'll have to look at the racial and ethnic breakdowns as well to make sure that the proposals are legally defensible. So, really, what we're looking for is direction from the city council in terms of how do we proceed. And again, this was our proposal, but if this is not how you want to go forward, then, you know, please tell us how you would like to go forward, and we'll, we can move on. And that goes, I think, to Councilman Lawson's question about moving this along and doing this on as timely a basis as possible. First decision is, how do we want to go about it?
Okay. Mr. Smith?
You know, I just want to be clear about something. I think we should do this in a public process. I just don't think we should be presented with the options here. Whether you give them to me personally, or give them to everybody personally, I think we should see them beforehand, so we can make some intelligent decisions or comments.
Yeah, I think a public process is good, especially in this day and age with everybody watching the way they are. A public process makes a lot of sense. I don't know that we should do it at a council meeting. Maybe we should have a special meeting just to, just one subject as redistricting and have it on a Monday that we're not normally having a council meeting, maybe, or whatever, but, so we can have a good, sound discussion and take plenty of time to look at all the scenarios, maybe, that you guys are going to come up with.
Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to throw out, I think we ought to have a date and work backwards from that date. So, if we don't have to have this done until the day before filing, I think that's our end date. And what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see like three meetings, and to make it easy, let's just do them before the city council meeting. I mean, we're off every other Monday anyway. I mean, instead of starting at two, we start at 1:00, and we have an hour. We have, I'd like to see at least three public meetings. In other words, we sit here, you know, you bring whatever you need to bring, the first one, we can tear it apart, rip it apart. But I'd also like to see after, depending on how many meetings we have, after the second one, you go out to a neighborhood meeting and let everybody in the ward see it. Now, if that means five people show up, fine. If that means no one shows up, just schedule it in each one of our wards and say, this is what it looks like now, do you have any input? And then, you can, then we can defend the fact that the reason we're doing this is because of the, you know, the road goes here, I think you have to do it by voting precincts if you can, and ethnic is part of it, and that way, we can get some input from the public also. I don't think we need to really rush. Does anybody see a rush, why we need to rush on this thing? As long as we get it done the day before filing, right? We're good to go. And filing doesn't start till when?
May. March?
Somewhere in March.
March?
Yeah, it's March.
March, um...
2012.
2012, March of 2012?
June is the first.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that gives us quite a bit of time, doesn't it? Okay. That's my input. I'm not directing, you know, I'm just, it's my input.
You can direct him, because it's a public meeting.
I want to give you my two cents worth to just say, let's just have three different options. Let's do it, I agree with Mr. Carrigan, before a regular city council meeting, and let's start from there, and let's get it done, you know, as quickly as reasonably possible.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Schmidt? Would, so if we presented it in a format where it was like a staff report, where you saw the maps, and then you got to come to that workshop already of seeing the maps for like a week, that would be, is that what you're talking about?
That's exactly what I'm looking for. That's all I'm looking for.
Like you would do a normal agenda item?
Right, okay.
And frankly, I mean, I think that was the intent of this process, was that the maps would be provided, you know, when you get your, when you get your packets. We could certainly do it, try to do it a little earlier in that, in this case. I would ask that, in terms of direction, if we could have it in the form of a motion, so that we, you know, we have not, you know, not comments ideally from five individual members, but a motion that provides us, you know, clear direction, because I think...
Make a stab at a motion?
Shoot. I move that we have our first redistricting meeting at 1:00 prior to the June 11th regular city council meeting, or July, excuse me, July 11th council meeting, and that staff would bring three different options forward, and at that time, at that meeting, we'll decide when the next meeting will be for other, further, how do we say that? Direction.
Do you have enough time to do it by July 11th?
Based on some of the discussion, Mr. Mayor, I'm concerned about neighborhood meeting, neighborhood meetings, including the neighborhood and redistrict, and having the council workshops, and also verifying, to be fair to me, verifying...
Sure.
...the demographic stuff in each different census block.
That was the 25th. So, what, give us an idea of when you think you might, you could have it ready?
Could have the first, the first draft ready?
Yeah.
I think that we can have the first draft ready.
Now, give yourself time.
We can have the first draft ready by the date that's listed on, in the, on here, July 11th. But it would be, it would be the dates after that, that if we, if we include neighborhood meetings and that kind of thing, that those may vary.
Okay, so you could give us your first draft on July 11th?
Correct.
We could discuss it and give you further direction or advice on how we want to see it go. And then, you could structure the further, the meetings later on down the road. From our input on your, what you've given to us, you can, we give you input, and then you can tell us what, how much more time you think you're going to need before we have to come back and address it again.
I think so.
Does that make sense?
Yes, and I would just like to clarify that again, we intend to present on July 11. Are basically concepts, you know, there's, we've come up with at least a couple of different ways to approach the wards, and we, you know, it's a fairly high level, so then we can get your input on those concepts.
We can get input on your concepts and let you know that you're going in the right direction, or if you need to change directions?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Sean.
I understand the motion, but would suggest that you leave the timing of the matter to come back to the council, to the manager, and setting the agenda for that special meeting to discuss this. A little bit concerned that this can be properly done by July 11th with three scenarios. Also, want to make sure I can find a time when you'll all be present, July 11th. I know I've got some council members who have conflicts, so if you could just leave the scheduling to the manager, we'll bring forth, if you could modify this motion, three alternatives, and have a opportunity for you to advise us on the next steps as this item is brought back to you in a series of meetings. And we'll also have a chance to evaluate the process suggested by Councilman Carrigan for meetings within each ward to gain public input. That, I think, needs a little bit of strategy work, and then let you look at what that would look like.
Yeah, my concept was that after our second meeting, we probably have it pretty worked out. We're redrawing the lines, but, I mean, I think after our second meeting, we'll probably have an idea of what it's going to look like.
Yeah, good product.
Okay, then I'll amend my motion to leave to the city manager's discretion as to when the first presentation will occur.
You have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the motion as amended. Everyone understand the motion? Are we okay there, Mr. Attorney? Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pass unanimously. Thanks, boys. I know this is not easy stuff, but, yikes. Well, at least you don't have to worry about political parties. 6.8, consideration of possible approval to purchase various commercial insurance policies to protect financial interests of the city and for the next policy periods. And I think, Dan, you said you want to do 6.8 and 6.9 together, and then we'll vote on them individually?
At the pleasure of the council, certainly. It's a pleasure to be here. It's Dan Maron, your contracts and risk manager, for the record. That's a new title with the last reorganization, so I'm here to talk about insurance. Item 6.8 and 6.9 represent the annual renewal of insurance policies that work to try to cover events that may occur beyond the city's self-insurance limits. With respect to the city, this includes your property and contents insurance, general liability, automotive, tenant liability, and employee policies. Generally, if you look at the spreadsheet that was included in your staff report, we've maintained our levels of coverage from past years. And while we've seen some fluctuation in individual policies, some up, some down, the net cost to the city has decreased slightly from last year, which is continuing a three-year trend that we're pleased to see, given today's insurance market. With respect to the treatment plant, that is restricted to the property and contents policy, which is an annual policy. And then, there is a pollution liability policy, which we renew every three years. And that's where you're, why you're seeing an increase from the previous year, the previous budget year, I should say. The primary property policy has remained firm, it's the same amount as last year. As I said, the pollution legal liability policy is renewed in a three-year cycle to gain the city the best possible value. During the examination of that policy, we've added some coverages to the pollution liability, dealing with potential exposures in the area of transportation, materials that we're transporting off-site to the plant that may cross rivers. We added some coverages there that were deficient, and also looked at other potential threats to the facility. We managed to add those back in, or add those into the policy without having a net increase to that three-year cycle. So, with that, I'm pleased to try to answer any questions. Additionally, we have representatives from our insurance broker in the audience that can answer some policy-specific questions if necessary, but otherwise...
Question for Dan or the insurance agents? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion on 6.8. Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve agenda item 6.8. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 6.9, any discussion on 6.9? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve, 6.9 is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. We have no public hearings, no planning and zoning. Okay, comments from the council and city manager, Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. For the city attorney, Chet, do you want to start a code amendment on that one issue that you had to bring back?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
Just want to thank the city manager and staff for putting on the employee appreciation lunch. Looks like a lot of people showed up, and it was appreciated. Jeff was in charge of the cake.
Must have been a small one, then, huh?
Just desserts.
Just desserts.
Big knife.
Yeah, big knife, big slices. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of the very healthy discussion on 6.7, I think it's important that city attorneys, city managers sit down and give the council, I'm requesting from myself, guidance on all the meetings with staff that we have, what constitutes violation of the open meeting law, what does not. I think those guidelines need to be given to us, because what I've heard at the meeting here, that meetings that I have every month right now with staff are illegal, and I need to either cancel those meetings or have a document that says I'm allowed to do that on a regular basis. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Sean Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have some vacancies on committees in the service to the City of Sparks. There are vacancies for the following committees as of July 1st. One appointment to the Civil Service Commission for a three-year term, two appointments to the, I'm sorry, the Advisory Committee for the Disabled for a two-year term, and two appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term. In addition, there is also one vacancy on the Airport Norris Advisory Panel for the term that will expire on December 31st, 2012. The city also needs a representative, representative to the Technical Review Committee of the Washoe County Home Consortium for a three-year term. For this particular position, a background in finance, development, or rental housing, and an interest in affordable housing would be helpful, but is not required. Persons interested in serving on any of these committees should complete a volunteer application available at the city's website, which remains City of Sparks, I'm sorry, www.cityofsparks.us. On our homepage, please click on City Services, then on Volunteering and Getting Involved, and there you will find a volunteer application. The City of Sparks will accept applications beginning in a 14-day period from today, at which time these applications will be forwarded to the mayor and onward to the city council for appointment. Particular note, we would really like to see some applications come forward for the Airport Norris Advisory Panel. If you live in an area impacted by Airport Norris, please give this panel some consideration so that we can fill this important slot. Thank you.
Thank you. One comment, Pastor Hicks. Above and beyond the call of duty today, you stuck it out for the whole meeting. You're the first one, I think, that's done that, so...
I really enjoyed it.
Thank you. I appreciate, we're here to entertain you, believe me, so, anytime you come back, stick around.
Respect.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thanks for your thoughts and prayers. Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
I'll call you over to redevelopment agency meeting for Monday, June 27th, with a roll call.
Here. Agency Secretary Patterson. Here. Agency members, Ratty absent, Lawson?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Carrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Carey?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Okay, I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak at this time? I do not have any cards. Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the agency. Approval of the agenda, consideration of taking items out of sequence to meeting items.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Recommendation to approve the minutes, there are none, so move number four. Report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfer for the period May 5th, 2011 through June 8th, 2011. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve.